Good evening, everybody. I want to welcome you to our regular meeting, a city council meeting dated Monday, August fourteenth. At this time, we will begin with the call of order and do the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Council members, you're all getting your packet earlier in the week. You also received electronically. You've had an opportunity to look over the agenda. At this time, we'll undertake a motion to approve tonight's agenda and consent agenda. Thank you, council members. Remember, Councilmember Williams, thank you. Any discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to presentations. City Administrator, Mr. Roby, you want to introduce our presentation?
I'm going to say, Mr. Mayor, tonight, we have Chief Teeger and Chief, if you would be so kind, is to give us an update on the police department. We had Chief Teeger's June twenty twenty-three police report slated for the last meeting, unfortunately, because of some schedule that probably we weren't able to make it happen. But Chief's joining us here tonight to give us an update.
Yeah. Is it in the slide? No, I got it here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was in the slide.
Well, it's just an update as he's grabbing that.
Yeah.
So you can see in June, if you compare those to the May and April reports, our numbers were pretty steady. We still hover right around that three hundred and fifty-ish to four hundred and fifty-ish mark per cost per service per month. We didn't see a little bit of a dip in some of our traffic-related citations and warnings. I think that had to do with maybe a higher call in some of the other areas where we did have a lot of domestics that month. A fair amount of mental health-related cases that are very time-consuming. So some more traffic enforcement did dip a little bit. I also like to think it's because we had a really aggressive track enforcement in April and May. The spring kind of came in and that usually does make a difference. And you know, we need a traffic enforcement. We hit it really hard for a couple of months. Then we see a dip because of the aggressive enforcement that officers run giving in the months prior to that. We are progressed quite a bit in our hiring process for the two candidates that we were in the process of background in June. Now we have moved those candidates through physical fitness testing, medical fitness testing, and psychological evaluation. And both of those two candidates passed all those tests. So later on in the agenda tonight, you're going to be asked to approve the hire for Ryan Hillashine and Stephanie Kamari, who have appeared to be very good applicants. And we're excited to have them onboard and add two more patrol officers to our force to get us even closer to full speed. We also did receive four new AEDs for our squad cars. We got those free through a grant through the Minnesota AED project, where we had to just attend some training in order to get those AEDs. And then, so we sent one officer to Mankato, to South Central, to receive that training, the training. He in turn brings that training back to Leesurpee, and then we get those AEDs for free. The Minnesota AED project, the most have been deployed in our squad cars now. Our rifles have all, we've all been trained on our rifles and qualified with those rifles that we purchased back in March. So those are all in squad cars, and those are deployed now as well. We had nineteen ninety on August first, and it was good. We had a plethora of block parties that the officers visited. I did not personally attend the block parties. I was in Wisconsin at that time, so I missed them, but had a lot of positive reports from all the other officers. They had a great time interacting with the public and handing out, we had some sunglasses and coolers and salon chairs that we handed out to people. And that's always received really well. We had a really successful Giant Days. I know that this is an in-report, but Giant Days went very well. It was run well. Our security, who we partnered with, the Leesurpee Sheriff's Mounted Posse for security, that went really well and worked really well for the Giant Day celebration. A few hiccups with the parade because of weather and logistics with our original plan was to have buses at some of the intersections to block and control the traffic. I think there was some miscommunication. Bus company thought the parade was canceled, so some of that didn't happen. But we had enough available units to maintain a secure parade or out to the parade was successful as well. So really great Giant Days, no major issues. I appreciate everyone that had a hand in planning and prepping and executing that event because it went very well. So I'd like to say thanks for that. Do you guys have any questions as far as the street part goes?
Anybody?
Any names? I made it external to figure. Did you not have any before? We did. The ones we've had, we've had. I mean, they're probably eight years old at least, maybe a little or that. So this is a program we follow where you can get some for free. So we took advantage of that to update them and get some new ones. And so we still have, the old ones are still serviceable. We still have them. I think one of our plans is to maybe get those deployed into just some of the city trucks, like the public service vehicles, so that they have them in them. Doesn't hurt that anymore. We have all the community, which we have a lot, you know, throughout the community center. And for sure, every city facility has them in them. The school has them, but doesn't hurt to have those full in as many places as you can. So agree? Yeah. Any other questions? And then I just want to address the elephant in the room, which is, this will be the last report I'll be giving to you and addressing why I have accepted a position with the Sibley County Sheriff's Office. I just would like to take one last opportunity to address the city council and the citizens of Leesur, and just express my gratitude and appreciation that I have towards you and towards the city of Leesur for allowing me to serve here with the Leesur Police Department for the past sixteen years. I started my career in Leesur in January of two thousand and six. And I've been lucky enough to work within Leesur Police Department in many different capacities, including a patrol officer, a police sergeant, a police captain, a use-of-force instructor, a firearms instructor, a defensive tactics instructor, a safe and sober coordinator, and finally lasted a police chief. I've had the pleasure of working in a setting that allowed me to experience nearly every facet of the police work, ranging from community policing to felony investigations. I've had the opportunity to take part in circumstances ranging from organs and city code enforcement to traffic and DWI enforcement, all the way up to attempted murder, felonious assaults, robberies, narcotics crimes, domestic disturbances, child protection cases, and many other types of police investigations. I was able to build relationships, relationships through community outreach involving presentations and community service through citywide staff trainings and safety presentations. I work with the Leesur Hospital staff, and they're in service in many different topics of safety trainings. I taught new drivers' education classes and the opportunity to work with the high school criminology and constitutional law classes, boy scouts and girl scouts, troops and crime scene processing with them, reading with the kids at I Love to Read Month, the farmer's market presentations and food shelf distribution events. We hold our annual safety camp, and a lot of these things I just listened to have been the passion of my service here in Leesur. Those are things I truly enjoy doing with the community. I was able to develop lots of great relationships and connections, and those relationships and connections will always hold a special place in my heart. At this time in my life, I have a growing family that I adore, and I want to keep them at the center of everything that I do. The decision to leave the Leesur Police Department has been difficult, but I feel a calling to fill a more boots-on-the-ground role and serve my community in that capacity. Frontline law enforcement and first responder work is my passion, and I miss that role, and I feel a calling to serve back in that capacity. My hope is that you can understand my decision. Please know that I'm not leaving because of being disgruntled or unhappy, but because of a calling, I feel to try something new and serve as a capacity of duty shared for the Sibley County Sheriff's Office. Throughout my time with the Leesur Police Department, I've tried to serve with empathy, love, and to make decisions with my heart. My parents instilled in me the importance of service to your fellow man and by that service of love, even albeit tough love. Many people might see tough love as unfair or unjust, but tough love is supposed to be tough. It is a very important type of love to develop one's character and to protect them or hold them accountable to improve lifestyles or make future decisions. Tough love is not easy to give, and it's even harder to receive, but in the end, the hardship is worthwhile. I like to commend those of you serving on this council and all those that I have worked with serving the city of Leesur in the last sixteen years. This includes my fellow officers, city administration staff, public works workers, department employees, wastewater workers, or anyone else that I've served with for the city of Leesur for the last sixteen years. They truly are some of the most passionate, hardworking, caring, loving people I've ever met in my life. And like I've said before, the relationships I've developed with those people will always be very special to me. The good workers and servers of this organization serve with passion and kindness. They serve quietly and without the expectation of recognition, recognition or awards. They serve because it is the right thing to do, and they have no other motive to serve other than because they care. They truly want to increase the quality of life for those citizens around them. Their service is not easy. Your service isn't easy. It comes with people that are loudly unsatisfied with the service they are perceived to have received. It comes with critiquing and questioning from those that do not understand. True service is difficult and painstaking, but in the end, reward is a worthwhile reward. All of you here tonight have chosen life of service. All you who serve on this council and lead lives of service in your professional and personal lives, that service to me does not go unnoticed. I see your service. I see it every day, and I appreciate it. I appreciate those difficult decisions you have made to support your community and your cause, even when those decisions may upset someone or are disagreed with by others. I know you're making those decisions out of love and with your heart, and that is all that matters. Please continue to serve your community and to believe in your mission and to improve the quality of life for those around you. I'm grateful to all the members of the council and to all the citizens of Leesur that have allowed me to serve them for the past sixteen years, and I look forward to working with you in a different capacity. And from the bottom of my heart, I just want to thank you. Thank you.
Well, it's hard to follow that. I had something prepared, Aaron, just as always, just did have it. It's been a humbling experience to be able to work with Chief Teeger as a community member, as a member of the healthcare team in town, where he provided much-needed, very important education and working closely with staff at our healthcare campus here in town. And most recently, in his role as chief, he's been a trusted advisor. His focus on building department culture, on team building, and above all else, is love and service for the community. It's truly extraordinary. He's devoted sixteen years of his life, which is, as you all know, it's not just his hours here at the police station or hours behind the wheel of the squad. It's time away from family. It's time away from important life events. And he's truly in that service above self mantra throughout his tenure. Law person has changed a great degree, in particular, over the last five years, and Aaron has led that and helped lead our department through that as a sergeant to captain, and now as the chief, everything from body-morning cameras to outfitting our personnel with the most important equipment they can to keep themselves and our community safe. Even the stuff that will never get headlines, maybe Beth Harshell right it up and clown it now, but please start policies, improving our policies. That was a big thing that Aaron came into the office wanting to focus on was ensuring that all our officers understood what our policies were, making sure our policies were up to date. The policy manual is hundreds of pages long, and Aaron jumped right into it as chief. So on behalf of city staff, I want to thank Aaron for his endless dedication, his love, and his passion for his work. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chief Teeger, I'm going to miss saying that, Chief Teeger, because you've filled your role quite well in these eight and eighteen months you've been doing this. We appreciate all the work you've done. You kind of went through a long resume of all the things you've accomplished in this department. But your biggest asset, and I think I've told you this before, your biggest asset is definitely your involvement in the community, your leadership with kids, and your involvement with young people in this community. And I, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for that. You've been a great role model, and we really appreciate everything you've done for this community. And you're a very selfless person. You kind of mentioned community service in your goodbye letter there. And including these council members in community services often shows your selfless side, so we appreciate that. And Sibley County's gain is our loss, so I want to wish you well with that, and congratulations on finding something that you think you're going to enjoy, and I think you will. But most of all, again, selfless, you made this decision with your family in mind, and that's the most important thing. Thank you. This time, Chief Teeger, I'm going to present this award to you, or the certificate, I should say, of appreciation. I want to thank you again for everything. And I'd like to offer every council member to shake your hand as I present.
Football season starts today.
Thank you, and I recommend that Chief Teeger, at this time, if you should be, again, if you retire at all, enjoy your family.
I will. Thank you very much. If you want to talk in or at least you about before I leave, Joel?
It is later on in the agenda. I think we're okay. Thank you for offering. We love you, but I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, consent agenda. All items on consent agenda are considered routine. They've been made available to the city council at least two days in advance of the meeting. These items will be, will be mounted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless these items, unless a city council member or citizen subrequests, in which event this item will be removed from the agenda and considered the normal sequence. At this time, I will ask our city administrator to go over these consent agenda items. A little review, if you would.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Two items on tonight's consent agenda. First is approval of city council minutes in the July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Second, approved dispersals through today. Included in those dispersals are several items over twenty-five thousand dollars. First is to Minnesota Public Facilities Authority, what we colloquially know as the PFA. Debt service on the twenty-two thousand seven wastewater treatment facility, that one million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars, twenty-five cents. To MMBA for July twenty twenty-three purchase power, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars, eighteen cents. To Aztec Corp for payment application number one for the twenty twenty-three street maintenance project, one hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars, sixty-eight cents. Again, to the Minnesota PFA for well-eaten debt service, one hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars, twenty-four cents. And one quick note before I move on to item five, the PFA, just as an informational note, PFA is a state-associated program from which municipalities can borrow money and sometimes lower interest rate and better terms specifically for infrastructure-type projects. So we have a PFA loan for the wastewater treatment facility, and a PFA loan for well-eaten. Moving on, news and blacktopping for the patching portion of the twenty twenty-three street maintenance project, seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventeen cents. Leesur County Highway Department for the final payment of the city share of the Casada twenty-two project, sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars, twenty-four cents. Minnesota Department of Revenue for city sales tax in July, fifty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars. Neo-water treatment for wastewater material that affects three hundred to get phosphorus out of our water, our wastewater, excuse me, forty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And to the Stewart C. Irving Company for some fifteen KV wire, thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and twelve cents. I see approved payment application number one for the ceiling portion of the twenty twenty-three street maintenance project. A D approved MMBA alternate representative to serve as an alternate to Noel Kropman. An E approved twenty twenty-three Leesur County Municipal Maintenance Agreement, and an F approved final payment for the Casada twenty-two turnback project.
Thank you, Mr. Roby. Anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? If not, I will undertake a motion to pass tonight's consent agenda. Thank you, Councilmember Dooey. Secondly, by Councilmember Scherer, any discussion, comments, or concerns? If not, all in favor? Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on, public comment. I do not believe, we do not have anybody wishing to rest council tonight, so we won't go read public comment. Moving on, a city administrator update. Mr. Roby, you want to outline some of what you have for your.
I had, well, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. First of all, welcome to Joel Schmidt. Joel Schmidt is the city's new public works manager, who took over for Scott Schrader. Joel started last weekend, August seventh. He just missed Giant Days. So we fill in on what to expect for next year, and as Chief Teeger said, moving on to my next item here. Giant Days was overall safe and successful weekend. We had some, you know, hiccups, as we normally do. There was a tree that half of it fell over and landed on a committee member's truck, so he texted me. Truck was fine. No one was hurt. There was a big anthill on the middle of the tree, and then the rain after two and a half months of drought was just enough weight to take the thing over. But special shout-out to Shane Meyer and our public works crew, our water wastewater crew, and electric department, and city hall staff, who stepped up to help make sure this year's successfully, to the committee members, volunteers, service organizations, everyone who wanted to put in on the event for the weekend. Again, I thought it was, it was a lot of fun. We were there all weekend. It's something went in the parade, and in fact, I was saying it was the best parade I've ever been to, so there you have it. Public Services Director, just an update, that job will be posted tonight. Will be open for three weeks starting today. As part of the amended job description, the Recreation Department will report directly to the city administrator. The airport, from a facility standpoint, will report to the Public Services Director when it comes to airport commission and working with the FAA and the engineering team. Most of that work will report up through the city administrator as well. So that leaves facilities, utilities, and public works underneath the Public Services Director. Safety program, we do have an item on the agenda later tonight, an update for the safety program. Our safety coordinator, Foster Transfer, invited him to come to a future city council meeting just to talk about a safety program, things that we do, things that they've worked on, the importance that safety has within our organization. Ultimately, at the end of the day, Foster's goal and mine is the same, which is make sure that everyone can go home safely at the end of their shift. Last week, I attended a county-wide economic development meeting, the representatives from the cities that have EDAs. So the Senator Montgomery, Waterville, New Prague, Elysian, and County Commissioner Dave Breisler and County Administrator Joe Martin, lots of discussions about what the county can do from the economic development standpoint. Right now, the county doesn't have an economic development authority of their own. Some of the cities do. They're trying to explore what might they do to help advocate on behalf of not only the cities, but also the townships from a development standpoint. So everyone had a chance to kind of tell Joe Martin what they thought the county should do, which is kind of fun. But it was being facetious, but it was a good dialogue as the county tries to figure out what it wants to do going forward. Lots of focus at the meeting on what cities are doing to work with existing local businesses and the importance of working with the local businesses to want to expand and want to grow and help provide for and find opportunities for those existing businesses. I'll be out of the office, traveling tomorrow through Friday. I will have my full, if any, needs to reach here. Should be fairly uneventful week here. And last thing I want to talk about, and this is part, an update for me, and partly also I'd welcome some feedback on this. Planning Commission was the first public audience to get engaged in cannabis conversation at its meeting last week. So I wanted to bring here to council for some initial feedback. As most are aware, effective August first of this year, state law allowed for the recreational use of marijuana and the recreational possession of certain quantities of cannabis and cannabinoid products. City Clerk Lindsey Day and the zoning administrator Nielsen and Chief Teeger, I have been having a series of conversations over the past several months in anticipation of August first, what ramifications are long-term for the city, or what we can do, what we should do, what council's options are, what planning commission's options are. So there are primary approaches right now that most cities are working through. The first one is what planning commission will be looking at, which will eventually come to city council, which will be what to do about businesses. That's retail businesses looking to sell cannabis products, that's large or industrial businesses or hicker business who want to produce or package cannabis products. Where do we want to allow them in the community from a zoning standpoint? Are they allowable in this zone, but not that zone? Are they allowed in this zone as long as they're a thousand feet away from a school? Those kind of questions. So planning commission, because zoning and the complex plan are under, within their bailiwick. They will look at it. They will look at possible language for an ordinance or cut plan amendments, and then eventually bring forward a recommendation to city council. On that note, some cities, including New Prague and the center, have thus far chosen to enact what are effectively moratorium ordinances. And that just state law allows those cities to effectively ban any business operating in the production or sale of cannabis or cannabis products from operating within the city until January first, twenty twenty-five. At this time, it's not the staff recommendation that this money commission or the city council consider such a moratorium for a couple of reasons. One is that the Office of Cannabis Management, which is the new state department that will control licensing for cannabis businesses, is not expected to be up and running for months yet. And because any licensing request, we would get a city for a business that wants to open up within city limits, first needs to go through the OCM, the Office of Cannabis Management. The real is, we're not going to get new requests anytime soon, so we have time to work through this process, time to develop an ordinance that works for our community, and also hopefully wait for some additional guidance from the League of Minnesota Cities and from the state, who will be recommending some potential model ordinance language. So it allows us time to have this conversation. And also, frankly, like I told a couple of my other city administrators in other communities, that if the OCM gets up and running next August and city council is inclined to allow for zoning, that would allow a business like that. There's some benefit to the city of Leesur being a little bit more welcoming and not putting a moratorium in place at a business that wants to open with the county. It can't within the center, or maybe it can't within New Prague because they have moratorium. If we don't, that's, you know, potential economic development opportunity for the city. So planning commission and people, you need that. The more immediate item The, the more immediate item that we're recommending city council look at is the item that almost every city is looking at right now. Which is public use, so that's use of cannabis products in within city limits. Um, the city law doesn't allow cities to um some flexibility where you allow or don't allow rules of And so what, uh, we had a meeting last week with a representative from the city attorney's office to discuss some potential options. Um, and actually just this afternoon, they sent through a draft ordinance, um, which we will review, but in our conversation with the attorney, you know, there are a couple of things that city council could do, and this is where I'm looking for some feedback. City council could opt to do nothing. And effectively say that city code will not call any intention to outline or banning or prohibiting the use of cannabis products anywhere. And we just wait and see if there are complaints, if there are concerns, if there are issues reporting from a public safety standpoint and from community members. There is the other extreme, which is absolutely no cannabis product use at all in any space that is deemed a public space. So that may include parks, streets, sidewalks, any right of way, any area that's accessible generally to the public. Could allow all products. Or city council could maybe go somewhere in the middle and say, well, we just want to which is where we've been looking at specifically, which is um where might it, where might it be considered a nuisance to the general public? And what we started to settle on, um, and we asked the attorney to generate a sample ordinance was the smoking or vaping of those products. So if someone is eating a hemp-based or low THC gummy walking down the sidewalk, unless they're doing something else that would create a nuisance in their behavior, the very act of them eating a THC-based gummy bear is probably, is perhaps not as much a nuisance as someone who happens to be walking down the sidewalk downtown in the business district. Um, smoking or vaping a cannabis product. So that's where um or city council could just decide to just ban it in parks and maybe sidewalks are okay. Um, just public parks or anywhere that's within a thousand feet of a school, you can't use it, but a sidewalk on South Level One, maybe that's okay, but the trail on South Level One, maybe that's fine. It's entirely up to city council to decide those boundaries again, but we've requested and received as far as a draft ordinance that would ban the smoking and vaping of products in any public place, period. But I wanted to get feedback from council tonight. There any questions, concerns that we may bring back to council before council considers such ordinance? We can then.
Anybody have any comments? This is, can be a little complex. I know, I, uh, the first thing we talked about is for the production sale of this week. As you mentioned, as we move along with this, uh, this, this new law. Um, but the second one where you gave us some options as far as ordinances, um, my feeling is, um, you know, we, we've got some kind of in place as far as smoking goes, um, as far as school parking lots, you can't smoke in a school parking lot. I'm, I'm kind of in the middle on a lot of that. I think, I think, I can see where it might be a problem in a park. Might be a problem with kids walking into a hockey arena at the community center, clothing lab. That's kind of the way I feel. Um, we certainly don't want to take away anybody's rights to do what they want to do. We're not prohibiting this type of activity in your personal property, your personal homes, but um as far as um, when there's kids involved, I, I kind of feel like um there, there should be some ordinances at least. Anybody else have anything, Dan? We're not acting on anything for tonight, but just open discussion.
I've always looked at it's hard of the argument to pass this in the first place with the legislature, as I have read, is that cannabis is no more and probably much less damaging than alcohol. And with that thought, wherever you can't drink in public, you can't smoke pot, right? Right? I mean, it's, if, if that's going to be put on the same level as a can of beer or a bottle of whiskey, why not treat it as such? Because that's essentially what the legislature has done. That would be my thought.
My only thought on it is if we do put an ordinance through, we need to make sure we tie it in with what we already have with tobacco and alcohol, so we don't have any discrepancies between any of those ordinances.
Yes, I agree. So in my, um, in response to um both of yours, so we've, we had this conversation with the city attorney because a lot of cities are doing that. They're just taking their cannabis ordinance or language and applying it to alcohol um use or tobacco use. So the city of Missouri, um, city code does not explicitly um prohibit tobacco use in any location. Um, it also does not strictly prohibit alcohol use in any location within the city. So um there are lots of things city code of course does prohibit, but alcohol and tobacco use, so we can't use that as a reference. That's what the attorney said, well, you just stick it up your alcohol tobacco, and we said, well, we only have alcohol and tobacco prohibition in public parks or or in public spaces generally. Um, so would, if council were to um enact an ordinance for cannabis, it would be a standalone um ordinance? Or I should say, it wouldn't have to be, but we just it comes from a good old road of, okay, well, if we're going to be cannabis, let's look at alcohol too. I'm not suggesting that at this time, but um we just can't, some cities have it pretty easy. They can just have it on to their alcohol ordinance. Uh, of course, we have lots of nuisance ordinances that cover behavior that's directly related to public intoxication. But nothing specifically that prohibits the use of those products in public spaces right now. So in theory, it would just be a standalone um in likely the chapter that we call offenses against public morals right now. That's in.
So like, consider a year from now, if you have summer in the valley and everybody's downtown, sitting on the sidewalk and half, one half's smoking and one half drinking. You, you, the potential for exposure to secondhand smoke. That's the tough one. And then kids are down there.
Yes.
And how do you spell that out all out? It's going to be a challenge.
And that's, that was one of the, because to you, right, that's, was one of the basis of the argument for legalization is that comparing the two, we allow alcohol use, why wouldn't we? And the one exception or the nuance to that is secondhand exposure to it.
You know, you take it the next step. Block off certain areas in the park. You can smoke your weed here inside these ropes, just like they used to do with smoking areas and still do with areas outside private and public buildings.
Yep. So anywhere, anywhere, just to clear, and I suspect everyone knows this, but anywhere that falls into the clean the Clean Air Act for indoor smoking, for tobacco also applies to um to cannabis. But um from an outside standpoint, and that's why we looked at, you know, do we just initially say in parks, because those are areas that might be frequented by children and we would outlaw in parks, but perhaps sidewalks and streets would be fair game because it's a little bit more open. But then someone rightfully pointed out, well, we have areas that are technically in the public where you could be you get outdoor seating at a restaurant, for example, and if it's legal to use outside. You're drinking, that's one thing. If you're you know, offgassing.
Yes.
Cannabis smoke, that's another thing from a nuisance standpoint. That's, that is a challenge, which I think is why some cities are just saying, nope, can't do it. And if their community says, no, you can't drink alcohol in public places, it's pretty easy to understand cannabis to that. Well, then one other nice thing to think about is to think of downtown, we have a couple of establishments down here where I believe it's okay to smoke out there.
Yes, it's.
And the drinking. It's kind of hard to mandate. So um, these are challenges we, we need to start thinking about. Now, we need to start opening the discussion up. Work it around as we move.
Okay, yeah, smoking presents a different perspective.
If, you're correct from a nuisance standpoint, and to, to your point though, you know, tobacco use, we, we discourage tobacco use in city parks, but it's not explicitly called city code. And um because we don't have a new code for tobacco and alcohol, it makes this conversation a little bit more interesting than it would otherwise be because we haven't technically had that conversation about tobacco use with the general public in the context of city code. Um, and so yes, I expect we will get into a lot of arguments saying, well, if I allow just smoking a cigarette, tobacco cigarette, and I can drink a beer, why can't I use? Why I can't have a marijuana cigarette?
Hey, that's a fair question.
Yeah. It's pretty nice to know we didn't want to just break forward in order to tonight for everyone to review because there's a lot of components to this and I expect some public feedback. So we're always happy to answer questions. Like I said, we've been digging into this and having this conversation probably since January when the legislature first started to get some steam.
Uh, Mr. Roby, thank you for the foresight with this and necessarily some uh subject matter we can discuss as we move along. And I would ask the um administration's city put together some thoughts and maybe bring it to the council as we move along. If there's some things we need to read out of there, we should, like, yeah.
And it does come to the counter, we're going to need several options. This is, this is going to be difficult, especially knowing knowing now what I know about our alcohol or lack thereof ordinance.
Yes. And again, as of right now, there's no ordinance with alcohol in the parks and smoking in parks. There's technically not, not specific to that. It's
With that becomes behavior also.
That's correct. Yes. And, you know, large gatherings, things, other things, activities that are associated with alcoholization of part that are prohibited and so but I've been a thought before where someone have, you know, alcohol beverage and they said, right, they had a lot to do this, and they weren't disbehaving. They had one, they walked there. There was no behavior that would have.
Exactly.
Any other questions for the city minister regarding his uh, his update? If not, we're going to, we're going to the um regular agenda. We're going to, we're going to start with uh, Janite P A first reading ordinance six hundred Mount Cemetery zoning map amendment. This is interesting, Mr. Roby. Want to uh talk about this with us?
Good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so in the course of uh discussions about property lines, uh, the owners of La Bells, Steve Martin King had a somewhat of a discovery uh in that some of the burial sites that are at the site of Mount Cemetery technically uh were on the La Bells property. And they're, they're, they're older, uh, much older sites. And so, you know, forest surveying was, you know, as spot on as it is today. Um, and so uh as, as part of this, Mount Cemetery acquired some property, nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-six square feet property from um the bells, uh, from the kings. I have it here. It's highlighted in yellow. This is oriented so that the top of the picture is generally north, the bottom of the picture is generally south. Um, and there's a wooded area between Mount Cemetery and the, the business. Um, there's an old fence in there. Got a little bit confusing, but they wanted to straighten it out the property line. Um, which makes perfect sense as part of this, so uh the action of doing this, Mount Cemetery is zoned P I or public institutional. And then five hundred um, some of that one is zoned light industrial, I one. We need to move that, you know, roughly ten thousand square feet into light industrial where it's currently um public institution. So it's more or less a whole keeping item from a zoning standpoint, um, we need to update the zoning map. And that's the, the planning mission, um, considered this um some time ago and is recommending that city council conduct the first reading ordinance six hundred, which effectively um approved a lot line adjustment in the um between the two properties and amend the zoning map. So it's ninety oh eight, actually that's requested is a um to conduct the first reading of ordinance six hundred. And it is the choice of council, should someone choose to make motion to waive that reading, that is an option.
Thank you, Mr. Roby. Anybody have any questions on this? I think it's pretty, already, um, two parts and we've through this all of them. Ling team and uh this time I'm undertaking a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance number six hundred. And this six year second by this year, uh, one eight ten, and I was going to say if anybody didn't want to waive the first reading, we get to read it. So um, we have a motion that's been seconded. Uh, any other discussion comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Uh, anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to resolution R twenty two zero two eight, first reading of ordinance six hundred.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the second of the three ordinances tonight um on the agenda. Uh, this one related to uh the property is currently owned by Hope Terrace and the property formerly known as the Presbyterian Church property. Um, so this all started with uh the owners of Hope Terrace, um, coming forward to city staff with a proposal to extend or expand their footprint on their existing property uh by eight units. This was something that they had planned on at some point adding on to their existing structure. Hope Terrace would not require any additional plan. Uh, they have the space to do it and working with city staff through the planning to get this done. As part of that, um, staff recognized that um eight eleven South Forest Street, which is where Hope Terrace currently resides and four oh four Turtle Street, uh, which is the, the church property are both still zoned R two, which is single family residential and um are guided via the company's plan as low density residential. So um clearly there's not a um neither person right now um would appropriately fit the definitions of single fam- residential or low density uh, single uh, single family housing. Um, and if they look at the map here, you can see the brown section on the north edge. That's the, the Sur Meadows development. Sur Meadows is currently zoned R four, which is high density residential. And appropriately, that's what eight eleven South Forest Street should currently um housing is just living facility. Um, when Hope Terrace was built and within the new zoning code was um implemented in twenty nineteen. Eight eleven South Forest Street is one of those areas that probably could have been moved at that point uh by city council action to um to R four to recognize the fact that it's high density residential, it's just living, lots of people living on one single property. And so the proposal um in front of us tonight addresses both eight eleven South Forest and four oh four Turtle Street. Uh, the reason for including four oh four Turtle Street is, is, is twofold. One is um certainly that, you know, there is the potential that at some point in the future it could potentially house um a multifamily structure, whether it's Hope Terrace or another. There's not a current plan right now to do so, uh, but it could potentially in the future. And also when we look at the zoning map for the city, you'll see that there are very, very few pockets of just one or two parcels in its burial um kind of standalone district. What we try to do is we um try to group in zones, several parcels, several um, the number of a number of different properties into one single zoning area so that we don't get, you know, one block is single family and one block is commercial. The next block is public institutional, you know, so that we're generally organized. Um, and so if we're considering rezoning eight eleven South Forest Street, it would make some sense for consistency purposes to rezone four oh four Turtle Street as well to create, uh, several parcels in a section, um, that are all zoned, um, high density residential. And, um, and churches, so let's say four oh four Turtle Street remains a church for the next forty years. Uh, churches are an allowable use on their R four high density residential, um, within the zoning code. And so it's, it's an appropriate place for, a place of worship to be, um, zoned high density residential. So planning commission reviewed this. Um, as it turned out, the owners of Hope Terrace, um, decided to pump the brakes on their plan expansion. But they may revisit it. They said maybe in spring of twenty twenty-four. Development did not condition or not, it's still the appropriate thing. Uh, staff feel to conduct, um, to, amend the company's plan to recognize both of these parcels as being R four high density residential. And then also, um, consider ordinance six oh one, which would, um, effectively, uh, rezone those two parcels. The planning commission did all the public hearing on this, um, and received some public comments, though they were, um, mostly related to the potential development, um, of Hope Terrace or the expansion of Hope Terrace. I would say they were, if it's a fair assessment, council member Schlier, they were not, the questions were not about the rezoning itself. They were about the expansion of Hope Terrace. Uh, so planning commission recommended, um, the group of resolution R twenty twenty-three dash zero two eight, approving amendment kind of as a plan and recommending council, um, that council consider ordinance six oh one, um, amending the zoning of these two parcels.
Thinking of, more questions, concerns? We have two actions, uh, in front of us here. We'll take these one at a time. Of course, the first one is to approve, uh, resolution R twenty-three dash zero two eight, approving amendment to the comprehensive plan.
Oh, okay.
Councilmember Schlier, seconded by councilmember Sullivan. Any discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to the second action, we're going to.
Hold on.
Okay, thank you. Um, to, uh, conduct the first reading of ordinance number six oh one, we have a volunteer. Would we like to waive that?
I'll make a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance number six oh one.
Thank you, councilmember Swanberg, seconded by councilmember Schlier. Any objections, comments, concerns, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on. To, uh, item number eight C, first reading ordinance six oh two, parking lot rezoning. Mr. Roby, you want to review, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Um, final orders for consideration tonight. Uh, the rezoning of the parking lot directly to the north of two nineteen South Second Street, uh, was sort of, she's currently occupied, you know, by the Sur Family Dental. Uh, as you recall, earlier this summer, city council authorized the sale of that parking lot, which is its own parcel, uh, to, uh, the business, uh, the Sur Family Dental. Uh, that parcel currently is owned PI, Public Institutional, um, as a city owned, owned by a public entity, so it was zoned as such. Now that the city has conveyed that parcel to a private landholder, rezoning is required. And, um, the recommendation for rezoning with that, in that parcel, be rezoned as B one B, which is our central business district of mixed use, so there could be some commercial, um, some residential. And that's the existing Sur Family Dental parcel that was previously owned, already owned by the, the business. It was already zoned B one B, so this would just make it consistent with the current building. And then the purchase agreement between the city and the, uh, the parking lot, uh, called for those two lots to be combined. And so, there are for these lots to be combined, they need to be, the city needs them. So ordinance six oh two effectively, um, rezones or authorizes the rezoning of one was parcel two one nine 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 zero one twenty, rezoning that for public institutional to, um, B one B.
Thank you, Mr. Roby. Anybody have any questions regarding ordinance six oh two? If not, um, I want to entertain a motion. Well, first of all, if anybody thinks they need to read it, you can use zone out. Otherwise, I want to entertain a motion to waive the first reading.
Oh, okay.
Seconded by councilmember Sullivan. Any comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to item eight D, interim police chief appointment. As you all know, we're missing a police officer, uh, after Mr., uh, Chief Tiki resigned, resigns. But most importantly, we'll be losing a rather big administrator in the public safety department. Mr. Roby, you want to explain that a little bit?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, so, um, ever since Chief Tiki submitted his letter of resignation, um, he and I and, uh, leadership at the city have been discussing how exactly we would fill that position. The reality of filling a police chief position is it's much more complex than filling a patrol officer, uh, or even sergeant or captain position. The background process is much more lengthy, elaborate, and understandably so. So, um, even if you find the right candidate the next day, it still takes a while to bring them onboard. Um, so our runway right now with Chief Tiki is running out, uh, which we do in Wood. His last day will be August eighteenth. And so we've been, um, in discussions about not only what, what is the process for filling, uh, a permanent police chief look like, uh, but also what might we need in terms of interim coverage to provide that chief law enforcement officer, um, for the city of the sort, to make sure that we have someone in that position. Um, from a position, filling the role, um, application deadline closed last week. Uh, all those applications have been scored and we're in the process of scheduling interviews now, um, for the police chief. I'm very pleased with the candid call that we received. Um, as irreplaceable as Chief Tiki is, uh, I'm just very, very pleased to see the opportunity that we got for the police chief position. Uh, from an interim standpoint, um, what cities will frequently do, um, is at least one of the things that we'll seriously consider, um, is bringing in, um, an existing, uh, chief or, um, chief law enforcement officer from another jurisdiction to fill in in the meantime. Uh, someone who has the experience, who has the, uh, the credentials to be able to step into that role and serve on a part-time, interim basis, covering the major administrative tasks, overseeing the daily operations of the department. And, um, yeah, and serving, yes, by city administrators, being on contact from the department. After a long discussion with Chief Tiki, uh, we reached out to the city of Bell Plain. Bell Plain's chief of police, Terry Steer, who's been at Bell Plain for several years now, um, is a highly qualified individual. Um, I know I shared his great biography with, it's not so quick because he, he comes with a lot of experience from lots of different places. And I had a conversation with the city administrator, um, over in Bell Plain and, um, both Chief Steer and city minister were open to the, um, to the proposal for them to provide Chief Steer to the city of the sort to serve as its chief law enforcement officer for a period of time, um, up until the point where we could find a suitable, um, replacement for Chief Tiki permanently. The proposal as it is right now, uh, while I don't know what Chief Steer's exact schedule would be, he's actually gonna be attending, um, planning council action tonight, um, attending a staff meeting at the police department that he was briefed to introduce himself to the officers here. He is familiar with the number of the officers on our force who've been in town for quite some time. And he'd like to begin some ride-alongs with some of our officers to more familiarize himself with the community. When he's in town, um, he would be in Sur Police Department uniform, with a Sur Police Department badge, driving a Sur Police Department squad car to ensure that the, the transition for our communities is as, um, straightforward as possible. Administrative tasks that he, um, is able to do so, he would complete, um, remotely from Bell Plain. And a lot of things he can do, whether it's, um, reviewing incident reports, um, or assigning investigations. He can do some of that remotely, um, which I said would be agreeable to, um, if he's working from, from Bell Plain and wherever he's working from. And then he would be likely to do a couple of shifts a week here, uh, patrol shifts in town. Uh, to help with the schedule coverage, but also, um, just to be present in and around the community. We're very fortunate that Chief Steer was so willing to, to jump in, um, and, and provide some support while we do our search and bring someone onboard. And, um, the agreement as it is right now, um, is being reviewed by the city of Bell Plain. So what I'm looking for tonight is authorization from city council to, um, enter into an agreement with the city of Bell Plain, essentially providing us the coverage that we need on a part-time interim basis, um, until we can bring on someone permanently. And we'd like that to be effective August nineteenth, which would be the day after here in St. Gertrude.
Um, now, just to be clear, um, administrator, how we, we are required, uh, mandated to have a police chief at all times.
Correct. We need someone to supervise the department and effectively serve as our G L O, our chief law enforcement officer, whether that's someone within the department already or someone from outside the department.
Very good. I happen to know Chief Steer fairly well to my, uh, work up in Bell Plain. I've worked with him quite a bit over the years. I know he's well respected as I respect him. Um, but he's got a great rapport with the community up there. Any, uh, comments, any questions?
Uh, just best case scenario, go on. Would he need to be our interim?
The agreement as it's drafted would, would allow Chief Steer to come to stand for it through the end of November. That's, that would be my worst case scenario. Best case scenario, I would say, mid to late October.
Okay, thank you.
Again, we, uh, we would pay for these services as, as we use them.
Correct. Um, so what I've asked Bell Plain to clarify, uh, the language is, is, is very standard and just outlines what his responsibilities are. He's not the city employee that, um, any, um, recommended discipline, for example, comes through me on his recommendation. He, um, the hard police officers do not become employees at the city of Bell Plain. So what I've asked Bell Plain, uh, for a clarification on is whether this would be built on a, um, hourly basis or on a weekly basis for, for coverage during the interim period. So there, so you got any numbers?
Um, I'm waiting on a number right now. Let's see, though. Any other comments, concerns? Otherwise, move on to the action that's, uh, above you there, to enter into an agreement with the city of Bell Plain for interim police chief services. So, in a second, councilmember Huntington first, and seconded by councilmember, uh, Swanberg. Any other discussion, comments, or concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to, uh, interim public service change. Mr. Roby, you want to explain this, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, so as you're all aware, we've had some changes in staffing in the public services division over the past few weeks here. Um, and HR director Lawrence and I have spent a lot of time on the job description for the public services director, as referenced earlier, um, in, in the, the job that we posted tonight. And on an interim basis, um, I've had a conversation, a couple of conversations with current water wastewater manager Foster Transfer. Foster came to the city of the sort with experience working in public works more broadly. Um, he has spent the last five years here at the city working closely with, um, all of our utility departments and public works. On not only projects, large scale projects, but also day-to-day work. And in, in my view, is, is, is an excellent candidate to provide, uh, services to the city as, you know, the interim public services director. In that role, um, much like the, um, revised role for public services director that would be posted, Foster would be responsible for all of our utilities. Would oversee electric, water, wastewater, stormwater, um, facilities, which is building and grounds for the city as well as the public works department. And should council approve that? And I did propose this in one motion, and council chooses to split it up into second motions, it's just fine. But should Foster be appointed, um, interim public services director, uh, my recommendation is that current supervisor of the water wastewater department, Pete Burns, being interim manager of that department. Pete has previously served as interim manager of that department, uh, several years ago before Foster came onboard. Uh, and has been with the city for a number of years. He was an excellent, um, excellent supervisor for the department. Pete Foster, uh, a great team, you know, overseeing a very complex utility operation.
Thank you. Any comments or concerns you want to address, Mr. Roby? Council members? No, we will move on to the action above you there to appoint Foster Transfer. And Peter Burns as our interim public service director and interim water waste manager, who's expected to lead that one.
So, most.
Thank you, councilmember. Second, councilmember Swanberg seconded. Uh, any comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, item P M, uh, safety and sure control, uh, contract approval. Mr. Roby, you want to explain this, please? I went to it once myself. Got to have our time understanding. It'll be a shovel my way.
Sure. So one of the things that Foster Transfer does in his role as safety coordinator for the city, um, is coordinate all of the trainings that are required by state law, by federal law, um, for our various departments. And so our electric linemen have a very specific set of training, um, obligations, our water, wastewater, public works. Um, departments have a specific set of trainings, um, everything from how to properly operate within a right of way to, um, enclosed spaces training to, um, um, dealing with difficult customers, um, to all the basic, um, SDS trainers, safety data sheet training, how to clean up, spill over the chemical, things like that. So all of these, a lot of these are annual trainings. And historically, the city has used a combination of three different, um, parties, um, MMU A, Vector Solutions, and DeMarco. Um, DeMarco provided our safety data sheet repository. Vector Solutions was our online training, uh, for new employees, but also for, um, training on, um, you know, sexual harassment training and things like that for, um, for all employees on an annual basis. And then MMU A, which has provided the bulk, historically, of our in-person training, um, to all staff, for the trainings, and then for specific departments. Um, there's some, um, efficiencies that Foster recognized we could, uh, potentially find. And so he has been on the search for some time, uh, researching. For example, provided more effective and cost, cost-effective and overall more efficient safety training program for all employees. And we received a proposal from Safeishure. Safeishure is, um, a company that provides, um, state and federal required safety trainings to, um, to these counties across the state. Uh, they come with a long list of references, um, and they could provide our safety data sheet repository, they could provide for all of our in-person training, with the exception of, uh, two, which is, um, specific training seminars specific to our electric linemen, uh, which MMU A would continue to provide. They would also provide, um, the majority of our online training for new employees and for existing staff. And they could do all of this, um, you know, uh, more encompassing training, um, more regular in-person training, which we find to be very medical for staff, um, at a more cost-effective, um, um, rate. Uh, we were able to secure a three-year price quote from them, a three-year price guarantee, um, saving, um, in the neighborhood of sixteen thousand dollars per year should this contract be executed. And in this contract, the city has an opportunity at any time, uh, to terminate the contract, uh, with notice to Safeishure if we find at some point that it's not meeting our needs anymore.
Thank you, Mr. Roby. Any questions, comments? And again, um, it's really, they're, uh, we're mandated to, should I have these data training programs?
Correct.
And, uh, they don't only serve as a training program, but they also serve as a good resource for our management to, uh, to contact when they have questions.
They do. Um, in fact, uh, They do. In fact, it's a great resource. If we ever had a surprise inspection inspection, for example, our first call would be to Safe Sure and they would send their representative down. And they would be able to work with us and Ocean too, through the inspection, make sure that we. Mediate any concerns that Ocean may have, make sure our policies are up to date, things like that. If they are, correct? Correct. Yes. Thank you very much for the act of evidence to improve the proposed contract.
We just have a question. Because they have a hundred and forty places that they go to where the opportunity, when you get new staff that missed, just missed the safety training. They'll be able to go to other entities and join those trainings.
I mean, I don't know that that's an option necessarily, but all of their in-person trainings are also offered virtually. So if we have one who misses, they have to do it virtually. Yes.
Thank you. You wanted to show that training.
Yes, they miss a day by a week. And they also, they have a great plan that it would really years implement something that we've struggled with every year, which is. On training, this is all at one time. So we bring on eighteen lifeguards. Trying to get them all logged in, do their virtual trainings to make sure everything gets done and every box gets checked. They'll work with us to coordinate in-person training for those, so we can get as many seasonals as possible through those trainings. Before they even start their shifts, which is what needs to happen. Thank you. All good questions? Anybody else? If not, the motion, the numbers up there is to approve the proposed contract with Safe Sure to provide safety. Consulting service. Council member Williams first, council member two seconded. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody oppose the eyes have it? We got a couple of things added to the agenda and you were given those at the beginning of the meeting. The next item is agenda A G, payment application Nielsen Black. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, these next three items would normally be consent agenda items. But when we see it late, we wanted to try to squeeze them on today's agenda. So thank you for calling it to be on today's agenda. Versus payment application two to Nielsen Black, Tommy Nielsen. Has been working on the patchy portion of the twenty twenty-three street maintenance project and has submitted payment application number two. Which has been approved and signed by the city engineer and reviewed by me. The action request tonight is a motion to approve payment application number two to Nielsen Black. Any questions? Now, entertain a motion. So moved. Thank you, council member Huntington.
Second.
Council member Sullivan seconded. Any questions, comments? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Moving on to A H, payment application number one to Sully Excavation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, similar to A P G, this is for payment application. Sully excavating is the contractor that we've been working on the Dobby Lane improvements to the surface and also the improvements to the ditches. Along Dobby Lane, really trying to improve that, bring the roadbed and the crown back to a state that is both. Safe for everyday use, but also is more maintenance friendly for our public works team. Sully has submitted the application number one for their work on Dobby Lane and. And approved by the city engineer group, reviewed by me as well.
Anybody questions for Mr. Ruby?
I don't think it's originally come through at like thirty or thirty-five. And I see there's no change. Remember I had the question that had to do with the assessment. The word assessment, Dobby Lane, it was a bad, it was agreed it was a bad word because property had nothing to do with them.
Yes.
And I believe it was thirty or thirty-five.
That's correct. It was, I believe, thirty-three thousand dollars was the original estimate.
And there's no change.
It's not attached here, but we do have, there was a, when they got it and started doing the work. It was assessed by our public works team and the city engineer. And they realized that there was some additional excavating and additional crowning of the road that needed to take place, requiring more. More rock than they had initially anticipated, that the conditions of the road were worse in places than they had initially estimated.
So that wasn't.
Not in the initial estimate, no.
Or on this.
It's kind of spelled out, I believe it's like the aggregate, certainly the original contract.
But we didn't amend the P O to that?
No.
Okay.
Correct. No, city council approved the project itself and so similarly, so the way. This project is run similarly to, I would say, the consult thirty-six project. Council approves an overall project with an overall estimated budget. We probably got fourteen C O's, credit assault thirty-six project, some of the negative, some of which are our responsibility, some of which are. Community responsibility. And council approval of that project is seen as the approval to look forward if there were. I would say that this was a reasonable amount of work that needed to be completed in order to. Bring the road surface to within the standards set out by the initial project. And therefore was considered a changer that would be approved at administrative level.
But it wasn't done.
I'm, I'm, I believe it's in there.
Under the invoice, there's nothing.
So you have the value of the bid item and then the value of the work, the last one?
Right, but I'm looking at the invoice and it says change order. It's okay. You see right there a blank on the other, all the other ones of these things I've seen. You know, it, it's five thousand dollars or four thousand or whatever. And it's a change order, so it's something that has a deviation from the original P O.
Understood. Anybody else? The motions are on the requests still above there to approve. Payment application number one, the Sully excavation is presented. I'm sorry, your question's been answered? Okay, thank you. It's been so moved by. Council member Swanberg seconded by council member two. Thank you. Any other comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody oppose the eyes have it? Moving on to item eight, is that I? Hold on, eight I. First, personal actions. Mr. Ruby, you want to explain? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As Chief Tiki mentioned earlier in his farewell address. Police department has finalized a search for two full-time officers. One is to fill out an existing vacancy that was created with the departure of. Dmitri Agnitsky earlier this summer. And second would be to fill out the remainder of the forces approved in the twenty twenty-three budget. And we've, as Chief Tiki mentioned, we were waiting on some documentation from the psychological and medical evaluations for these two officers. We just received them, as I understand it. So we wanted to get this on the agenda so we can get them up and. Get them trained. So we're very eager to, to welcome Stephanie Ryan to the police department. Thank you. Any questions? If not, this will be your opportunity to improve hiring. I'd like a motion for the approval of hiring Stephanie. Thank you, and Ryan. I wish I was full-time police officers.
Second.
It's a motion has been made by council member Huntington, seconded by council member Sullivan. Any comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody oppose the eyes have it? Moving on to items of appreciation, council members, this is your opportunity to share what's going on with your commissions and your community. And as always, we will start with council member Huntington.
I've got nothing to report today.
Council member Schiller.
I did have a planning future meeting on the ten. The first thing that we dealt with was item A C on our attended night public hearing for the rezoning of the parking lot. That the city sold the lease or family cantal. Second item was we, the commission received the results of the future of the city forum. And continued planning for the October fourteenth meeting. And also, as administrator Ruby talked about, they received information regarding current cannabis laws. City council responsibilities, the planning and zoning responsibilities. They talked about retail, manufacturing, distribution. And they requested that staff provide more information to the commission for a future meeting to consider potential changes. To the zoning ordinance. That's all I have.
Thank you, council member Schiller. Moving on to council member Sullivan. Council member Swanberg.
A couple of items. Again, just a thank you and. To Chief Tiki for his sixteen plus years of service. We are truly going to miss him and. Sibley County is getting a really good man and I'm glad he's still in the law enforcement business because he is truly a professional. Thank you to the Giant Days Committee and all the volunteers who make that possible. Huge thank you to all the city employees who helped out with the celebration. Law enforcement, it truly is a big endeavor. And I think it was a wonderful weekend. Unfortunately, we had some rain on Sunday, but. The guarantee of the farmers are happy with the rain, so we were still able to get the parade. Also like to welcome all of our new employees that we hired tonight. Looking forward to meeting all of you. And I would also like to thank our summer seasonal employees. I know many of them are headed off to college. I am also disappointed that our pool closed yesterday. It seems like we should be able to keep that open a little bit longer, but. I do thank them for the work that they do for us over the summer and wish them the best back at college.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to council member two.
I would just like to add to what Dave said about the Giants Day. A bunch of people came up for Mankato. Primarily because they were interested in the band. And I'm going to text back, what a great celebration your little town puts on. Big thumbs up. The other is to the public, tip of the hat to the public's works department. There's an issue with a storm sewer over, and they were there the next morning at seven thirty. So much appreciated.
Thank you, council member two. And last thing, council member Williams.
Again, on Giant Days, collaboration of all the community that worked together, we make that, pull that off. It was really great. And appreciate the street sweeper for cleaning up public candy that we didn't want to touch for the dollar. That was a different change, wasn't it? And just reminded about Summer in the Valley on Thursday and have H R A meeting this Wednesday. And we're still working on the final corrections for the, that needs to get in by this end of the week.
Thank you. And I will end with, I was going to mention a lot of things. You mentioned. Mr. Swanberg, we're hearing the giant celebration. I think everybody was a big part of that. A lot of things we can control with the operation, but the one thing we can't control is the weather. And it's just, it's gotta be probably one of the first times it's raining for a long time. I remember last year raining heavily. But to have a steady rain like that. Keep the crowds away is a little disappointing, but we'll be back in full force next. You know, hopefully a good weather. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn its name. So moved. Thank you, council member Ryan. Send all those in favor?